All right. Good afternoon. Welcome to Glendale City Council Workshop Session of November 23rd already. Wow, 2021 meetings called order. All of our council is in attendance. If you would make note of that, we won't do a roll call. It's not necessary. And with that, Ms. Beyer, if you'd go ahead and introduce item number one for us.
Discussion of Uniform Bylaws for All Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you, you have what has been discussed in the past, and that is a proposal for uniform bylaws for all boards and commissions of the city council. This has, what you have before you has been reviewed by the Government Services Committee. It's also been reviewed with the Clerk's Office. And so I'm available for questions, but before we get to those questions, I just want to run through a few highlights as to why we're doing this.
Yeah, we don't have handouts.
It should be an attachment. Sorry. So, excuse me. It's not a handout. It's an attachment.
All right.
I want to share my lap.
Yeah, okay.
I'll share.
The Vice Chair didn't have one either. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. And again, with regards to what's before you, and let me just touch upon some highlights. Most importantly is these are intended to be uniform bylaws for all boards and commissions, and that any deviation of them, deviation from them would occur in the formation ordinance for the respective board and/or commission. And then with those boards and commissions, in the event that they wanted to propose bylaws or any changes to these bylaws, that those would have to come before the council. You may recall, historically, we had some challenges with boards and commissions that made changes to bylaws, which created some conflict with their formation ordinances. So that's contained in this document. Another highlight to bring to your attention is with regards to member qualifications. With regards to member qualifications, that all members of boards and commissions must be a resident of the city, and they must remain so during the term of appointment unless otherwise provided in the ordinance or the resolution of the city council. Also, members can only serve on a maximum of two boards or commissions, and they cannot act in a manner that would influence either of those commissions. So, for example, if somebody is on the Planning and Zoning Commission and also on the Arts Commission, they can't take votes that would influence either of the boards because they would have that ability to do so because of them being on both boards. Attendance, the attendance hasn't changed. It's very much similar to what it has been. That two consecutive meetings or the absence of three regular meetings within a 12-month period subjects the individual to removal from the board or the commission. Also, one element of note has to do with powers, duties, and responsibilities. And part of this goes to the historical challenges that the council, that the city council has faced with regards to the recognition that boards and commissions provide an advisory capacity to the council. And so, and that speaks to the fact that the board or commission may consider and make recommendations regarding any item specifically referred to the body by the city council, public bodies, and this is important to note. And this is the boards and the commissions may not create, appoint, or utilize any subcommittee or working group unless it's specifically authorized in the resolution or the ordinance. So it's, unless it's specifically authorized by you, the city council, your boards and commissions cannot create subsets of working groups. And again, that was one of the challenges we've faced historically. And then the reminder that all actions that are formulated are submitted by any commission or committee or advisory, and they're not binding on the city council. With regards to elections for Chair and Vice Chair, those remain the same. And the remainder of the ordinance, for the most part, is what's been captured historically with the various formation documents with boards and commissions. What we'll be doing from this point forward, if the council agrees to move forward in this regard, we will be amending all of those formation ordinances or resolutions and putting them under the, these uniform bylaws so that from this point forward, all boards and commissions will operate under these bylaws. With that, I did not want to go into any more of an in-depth presentation because this has gone before the GSC, and members of the GSC may have some comments that they would like to share with the Clerk, but otherwise, I'm available for questions that you may have.
Any and none.
Mayor and Council, we'll be bringing this forward in two, I hope, two weeks. It may take a little longer because we will have to amend all of the ordinances and resolutions that formed all of our boards and commissions. But we will be moving forward with this, and you should see it again at a meeting to take action within, hopefully, weeks, if not a couple of months. Thank you.
Mayor, so, right here, Mayor.
Good.
Thank you. What is the plan after it's been voted in to update the commissioners?
Mayor and Council, I think that would work with regards to how we operate, terms of providing the training, and we'll provide that training update. We will circulate it to the boards and commissions, and if the council desires, we can put on each board and commission a specific update, and we can go and educate them on that if that's something that the council would like.
Yes, thank you.
All right. So do we have a consensus to proceed with the adoption of uniform bylaws to all the city boards, commissions, and committees?
Yes.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you.
Beyer, write them to you if you would.
Proposed 2022 Legislative Agenda.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Here divide staff report today is our intergovernmental program manager, Mr. Ryan Lee, and he'll be assisted by Deputy City Manager Brent Stoddard. Mayor and council, good afternoon. We come before you, as we do each year at the beginning of the legislative session, to seek council adoption on the city's state legislative agenda. I'd like to recognize Marcus Del Artino and Bob Charles here in the back. They are with First Strategic. They're our contract lobbyists. And I sincerely say that without the council's investment in a state, dedicated state contract lobbyist, and without the investments that you have shown to the League of Arizona Cities and Towns, we would not be where we are today. We've had a lot of turmoil at the legislature. It has not been easy for staff. It's not been easy, I know, for many of you, as we've discussed, the relationship between cities and the state. But we continue to have relationships on the local level with our legislators, and our, our contract lobbyists here have relationships as well that have allowed our interests to be represented at the Capitol. And that's very important. So a big thank you to the council and to First Strategic. Many of the slides and the discussions we'll go through this afternoon, you should be familiar with, as each of you have served on this council for several years now. And we try to keep the legislative agenda simple, short, and very direct so we can have a targeted approach at the legislature. So let's go to the next slide. So just real quick, the 2022 legislative session, the makeup has not changed. The election will be next November. So we continue to have a Republican majority in both the House and the Senate. We in Glendale are represented by five legislative districts. We have three Republicans and two Democrats in the Senate. We have five Republicans and five Democrats representing Glendale in the House. Notable leadership positions, I shared this with you last year, and the committee assignments for these leaders have not changed. So as you can see, Glendale is represented by leaders in both the House and the Senate who chair various committees. And this is an advantage to us as we have maintained these relationships and are able to seek a support for bills that we are advocating for, and also to have a direct access to share concerns with bills that would impede on local control or in our city operations. We have worked closely with our legislators over the last, every year, but over the last several months on legislative outreach. Thank you to each of you who have assisted in those efforts, whether it's phone calls, meetings, lunches. We know that you have your own individual interactions with many of these legislators. We are grateful for that, and we, and we know that that is critical for our success at the legislature. We did have our legislative lunch scheduled for January 12th. Until this morning, we found out that Governor Ducey is hosting his State of the State, West Valley State of the State address on that day over at Phoenix International Raceway. So we will work to reschedule our lunch, hopefully the day before or the day after. So some major themes that, that we were focused on last year and results that came out of the legislature. As many of you recall, the budget and the surplus that the legislature debated last year was significant. There was a $2 billion surplus. It led to discussions about the flat tax, and ultimately, the governor signed a bill that will install a flat tax into our economy. Now, I will mention that enough signatures were gathered, and the Secretary of State did verify enough signatures to refer that flat tax to the ballot, and that'll go to the voters in November of 2022. I imagine and anticipate that many of those same discussions will come back this legislative session, as we anticipate, again, anywhere between $1 and $2 billion of, of excess revenue. We will determine the economic impacts of 208, and again, the, the flat tax. Another major discussion that each of you will be asked to help with is the Proposition 400 Transportation Sales Tax Enabling Legislation. So MAG and their contract lobbyists are currently working on that language, and we will all be asked to assist in that effort. And thank you, Mayor Wires, for your meeting so far as our representative in MAG to meet with leadership in both the House and the Senate. In that one, and just quickly, we, we know we have a lot of work to do. There's a lot of conversations and, and concerns about what kinds of modes of transportation should be funded, what shouldn't. We know that light rail is a big issue, and so we are working all cities within Maricopa County to try to get our legislators to support that enabling legislation.
But before you go on, would you briefly discuss the meeting we had yesterday?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, and I'll go back. And so before the meeting yesterday, Mayor Wires was asked to, Mayor Wires and Mayor John Giles of Mesa were asked to meet with the Senate President in, in one meeting, and then the House Speaker and the Majority Leader, Mr. Ben Toma, who represents Glendale. In both of those meetings, we walked through the enabling legislation. We talked about the plan, what we want to do, how much money the plan will generate, it's about $26 billion, and what the plan would be over 25 years. Yesterday, Mayor Wires, Mayor Giles, and Mayor Gallego of Phoenix met with the business community to talk about the partnership that we, that we need to have, that's critical in order to get Prop 400, the enabling legislation through the legislature, and also the ballot initiative, and, and what we're going to ask the voters to do. So Mayor had a very successful meeting yesterday with many of the most influential business leaders, ranging from Arizona Commerce, trucking, housing, rock products, and transit, and so on. So, anything else, Mayor?
Successful meeting.
It was a good meeting. Thank you. The last thing, and then we'll go to the next slide, is the 1487 expansion. So as many of you recall, last year, this is part of the budget, the legislature pushed through an expansion of 1487, which allows the legislature to instruct the, the Arizona Attorney General to investigate cities and towns. And if we're found in violation, that, then our state's revenues are threatened unless we correct the violation. That was only geared towards policy set by the council. Last year, an expansion was signed into law that would threaten the actions of staff as well. So we were very much opposed. That was challenged in court, and just recently, that was one of the few court challenges that were, that threw out or violated state statute. And so today, that expansion is not present, but we anticipate a bill will be introduced to bring that back. Fireworks and Overuse Night Prohibition. We've presented to you several times about fireworks and the limited authority that we have at the legislature. The legislature deemed fireworks as a statewide concern and took away authority from the cities. Last year, a bill was introduced that would allow cities the opportunity or the authority to prohibit fireworks. The original bill was introduced allowing that prohibition between 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM. It went out of the House on a, about a two-thirds vote, so there was support there. Went out of the Senate committees unanimously, and then there was some discussion and a budget vote that was held to stop that bill from proceeding. That bill was amended in Senate Committee to be, the prohibition, the prohibited hours would have been between 11:00 PM and 8:00 AM, so it gave an extra hour. And then on the holidays, the prohibition would have begun at 1:00 AM on July 5th and January 1st to allow for those late evening holidays. We have been, we have received confirmation that the bill will be reintroduced this year. The City of Glendale and the City of Mesa submitted a league resolution on behalf of this city council, encouraging that bill to go through. And so we will track that. We will support it, and we'll make sure that we are there advocating for this legislation. So the legislative priorities that we will follow this year are similar to years past. We have several priorities that we follow: fiscal sustainability, economic development, land use planning, military preservation, neighborhoods, public safety, transportation, and water. We will continue to monitor bills that affect the city's ability to operate and to provide services to our citizens, and we will continue to share a weekly update to the council so that as we follow these bills and as we work with our legislators on these bills, each of you can read weekly what we're doing. And if you have any questions, you can certainly come to, come to staff, and we'll walk you through those. Any questions so far?
Yes, Mayor. Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Okay. I have a question unrelated to all of the issues that you brought up, but I know that it's an issue that's been floating around about the issue of advertising in newspapers versus going online. And I, I think in terms of a major cost saving to cities, and I know there are cities that support moving to online advertising of, of notices. Where does that stand right now?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Clark. And I wanted to ask the mayor at the end of this to, to share that. I know that that's been an interest of his as well. So a couple months ago, the Clerk's Office and the City Attorney presented to the council the changes in statute that prohibit Glendale from publishing public notices with the Glendale Star because they publish in Prescott. And so the conversations that the council had a couple months ago was that we should be working with the legislature to eliminate the public posting requirements in the newspaper and allow us to post those locally on our, on our website. In speaking with the League of Arizona Cities and Towns, we will not be having the league's support on that because this did not go through the process of their legislative process. We dealt with this a few years ago with the Liquor Board. You brought that up, and we were just a few months too late. And so we, we paused that and then introduced it the next year, and it was adopted by the league. So we will not be having the league's support. I spoke with other cities. They're, to be, they're cautious and concerned about going up against their local media. But if it's something that this council wants us to run, and it's something that, that you want us to pursue, we've got the best contract lobbyists here, we will run that bill, and we'll do everything we can to get that through.
Comment?
Well, yeah, I have lots of comments. It just comes down to what makes sense. I mean, in today's environment, social media, electronic, everything, and the fact that we have newspapers that there's subscriptions are down dramatically. Most of the newspapers have now gotten to where they're not publishing as much as they used to, and now they're doing more electronic publishing. It doesn't make sense to me, and some of the council may remember a few years ago where we actually missed a posting time with the Glendale Star. And so it had to go to the Arizona Republic, several thousand dollars higher than what we normally would pay to meet the posting requirements. And what I talked with Ryan about, and this goes way back. I talked with Greg Stanton when Greg Stanton was the mayor of Phoenix about getting support where the cities have the opportunity to meet posting requirements from the legislature, that we could do it virtually electronically. And what I had learned at that point, and Ryan just spoke of it a little bit, there are going to be cities that are incredibly scared of their own shadows. They're worried that the, the media's going to beat them up with an election year, that they might get bad press. Well, you know what? We're here to represent our citizens, and if we can save money by doing it more efficiently, isn't that what our job is to do? I mean, honestly, I, you know, we have it maybe better than some, the fact that we don't actually have a local publisher any longer. I wish that they were still here, but, but the fact is they're not. It's called the Glendale Star. They're owned by someone in, I guess, Prescott and published somewhere else. I'm not even sure. So with that, I had asked Ryan, would he go ahead and, and move forward with having the opportunity for the city to see if we can't get legislation that would allow all government entities, not just cities, county, even, even state, where they have to meet publicity requirements, posting requirements, that we could do it on our own website if we have one. If we don't, then they would still have to go by the old standard. And maybe throw, throw the publishers, the newspapers a bone, and maybe the first year, we are allowed to do it on our own. But I think most of us already do that, along with, you know, giving them that one more year time to tweak their system to, to lose that, that business that they would lose. I don't believe that it's our, our job, our requirement to make sure that they stay afloat. I just don't. I, I think government's job is to be efficient, to serve its citizens to the best of its ability at the lowest cost possible. And I think that's exactly what this accomplishes. So I'm really glad you brought it up, but it is something that has been on my mind for quite some time.
It's been on my mind ever since, oh, it was before this council existed that the issue came up, and the majority of council was reluctant to move forward because of the Glendale Star, which was at that time local. And there was a lot of pressure put on council to, to negate the idea. But I think it's an idea whose time has come. As you said, even, even the Glendale Star and the West Valley Independent, they all have online presences at this point. They do not, and, and I suspect should not rely upon paid subscriptions as, as their means of livelihood. And I believe that many of them, I know the West Valley Independent has an online subscription fee. So that is where they are, the direction in which they are moving. And how come they can move to an online presence, but they don't want municipalities and other forms of government to do exactly the same thing? The only thing I'm concerned about, and I will ask this, would it be better if we waited a year and this summer tried to get the support of the league? Or do you think that's, that's not a possibility, and, and therefore, we should just move forward on our own with whatever other cities will support us?
Mayor, Council, or Councilmember Clark, I think that it would be best to go through the league process to have their support. I, I'm worried that as these hometown newspapers, the issue's revenue. The mayor mentioned that. Local governments, school districts, counties, we're subsidizing this industry. And to protect that, it's going to get personal. The industry's going to attack cities. They're going to attack mayors, council members about not being transparent, about trying to get around the voters, about trying to save a buck, and, and they're going to talk about the value of the fourth branch of government. And my only fear, or one of my concerns, is that these mayors are, and, and cities are going to start backing away and saying, no, this is not City X's investment. This is not, I don't want to name out a city, even as an example. They're all going to start backing away. And at that point, it's going to put hometown, it's going to put small rural legislators in a position where they are now going to be attacked, if you will, or questioned in their integrity. And so there's a lot of work to do. I would suggest that we go through the league process. But again, if that's the direction of this council, we will run that, and we will go full steam ahead.
Well, if I might continue, Mayor. It sounds like it's a monumental task to get approval through the league process because you've just cited the reasons why. So there may be no benefit this time in going through the league process, and better we just work to find allies within whatever cities in the state will support it. I, I think it's a tough road to hoe, no matter what way we go. But I'm not sure the league is, there'll be enough support in the league to, to wait until the summer and propose that we go through the league. I mean, I really don't know. I'd like to hear what the rest of council says, but it would seem at first blush, this is one where we just tackle it on our own. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I'm going to go to you next. But my thought is, can you imagine when the airplane was developed, and somebody came out and said, well, no, you can't take the airplane. You still have to take the train. I mean, it's not, it doesn't make any sense. We have to keep up with the times. This economy, our whole society, is moving so fast any longer. Things that happen, happen immediately. They're not happening three or four or five days later. And it's just a burden on cities and schools and everybody that are mandated to post in a newspaper that, quite honestly, most people don't get anymore. It's just a fact. So I, I don't, I'm not interested in waiting. I want to push it. Even if we don't get it, at least it's out there. It's being talked about, and I think it makes it that much easier the following year. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Lee, so is the issue with the league, is it a timing issue, or is it a principle issue with the league? Or, or both, possibly?
Both. I, I, more the timing. You know, the league wants to make sure that they're acting in the interests of all 91 cities and towns. And so they have a vetting process for when they introduce, cities are encouraged to introduce bill proposals. It goes through the, the committees. Many of you sit on those committees. Mayor Wires chairs one of those. And so then, at the league conference every year, all 91 cities and towns vote on, on each of the proposed policies, and that gives the league the authority to go and, and act on behalf. So it's more of a timing issue than it is, than it is a principle issue.
So, Mayor, if I could continue. So my thought is, if it's, if it's a difficult task anyway, we're very, I guess, less likely to be successful doing this on our own, and that we're more likely to be successful if we have the support of, you know, enough to get it through, through a league resolution. So I don't know why, if we really think this is the best thing for our city, we wouldn't try to give ourselves the best opportunity to get this across the finish line if this is what we believe we should be doing. So that's why I'm wondering whether, you know, skipping the league and working kind of in the background, has it ever come up before at, at league? And what was the, you know, did it, like a lead balloon, or was there support?
Brent, you can jump in with your experience. I know that in 2012, a bill was introduced. Granted, that was nine years ago, and, and times have changed. But a bill was introduced in a Republican legislature with a Republican chair, and the bill did not get out of its, his committee, which is unusual. Usually, the chair can at least twist some arms and get some, some of his bills through, or his or her bills through. But But I don't recall anything prior to 2012.
Yes. Mayor and council, as Ryan said, there was a bill that was introduced. The practicality of what happened at that point is the newspapers were all writing editorials, they hired lobbyists, they were getting engaged and involved, and ultimately, they wanted to know who was pushing and who was driving this legislation, just like in any effort at the legislature, so they can engage directly with that stakeholder. And everybody quickly backed off, fled to the shadows, and said, it's not us, it's Glendale. And that bill died because there was no support for it when it came from everyone except for one entity. And I believe we'd be facing a similar situation. As Ryan said, he went, discussed the topic with our colleagues at other cities to see where they might be. They did a quick temperature check with their people, and basically, the response back was silence, that they're not joining us, and they're not participating, and at the end of the day, that we would be left to, as we said, move forward on our own. I think that the league process, at the end of the day, does afford the opportunity, if you believe times have changed, the points that you're making here, Mayor, Councilmember Clark, Councilmember Tomachoff, the league process affords you an opportunity to go and to, in your own words, make a case, to present what you, how you'd like to move forward, what the pros and cons are. That process allows you to engage with your colleagues at other cities to see if there's general support. And times may have changed, you know, there may be, with different elected officials and other, there may be the opportunity where the league is, and elected officials are ready to move forward with it. Our initial temperature check with some of our larger city colleagues was that they were not going to, they were not going to help us or be a part of this initiative, so.
Yeah, and I'm going to interject. My personal experience as a legislator for eight years, rarely, and I think Marcus will affirm this, rarely do you ever get an idea, a bill that comes through that's challenging that ever gets through the first year. It's rare. And sometimes it takes two, three, four, or five years. I don't think putting this off and then coming back is the wise thing. Minimal effort, get out there, we're going to be down there anyway. I think as people are trying to figure out where you cut your costs, where you're more efficient to taxpayers, I think resonates with people. And again, I kind of question anybody on this idea, is when's the last time you picked up a newspaper? You know, I mean, when you think about that, it's not the same as it was 10 years ago, certainly not the same as it was 20 years ago. Again, I would still like to pursue it with or without the league. You know, if we get shot down, we get shot down, but at least we can find out where our strategies are for the following year. And it's, I had bills down there where it took me three years to get through. That doesn't mean that everything's easy. There are some things you get through very, very easily, but there are some things that takes forever to get through. You have to educate people.
Mayor? Yeah, I agree. I would say run it and proceed. Keep us updated.
Mayor? Having listened to both sides of the discussion, I agree with you. I think we should go ahead and run it without worrying about league support, because I don't think it's there anyhow. But witness the attempt just to change the hours of fireworks use, and it failed last year due to one legislator, Gowen, who happens to have an interest in the fireworks industry. And he was chair of that committee, and he held the bill. I think he should have declared a conflict of interest and recused himself, but that was not to be. So it takes, it may take more than one bite of the apple to get something done. So, yeah, we may fail this year, but who knows in the coming years if we keep bringing it back? So I agree with your sentiment. Let's go ahead and try it.
Thank you, Mayor. The one benefit I see for running it through the league process is you could identify who your, who the other cities are that support it. So I think, and then if it doesn't make it, and would be August, I guess, if it doesn't make it onto the league's agenda, then you still would be able to, with those, whatever other cities that you realize, and form a coalition with those cities, and then go through the legislative process without the league. But at least you kind of have a better lay of the land. As you said, I mean, these things take time. Strategy is incredibly important in this type of a situation. So I don't know what the harm would be in, you know, figuring out the lay of the land by trying it through the league and getting a better picture of where other cities are, and whether there's going to be any support, and who the supporters would be. And then if it doesn't make it through the resolution process at the league, then you still could go with the 2023 session and at least have a better idea of where we stand. So that's just my thought. Thank you.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. A few concerns. One is that we addressed this topic just earlier this year, as I recall, as far as the legal advertising. Don't have that information in front of me right now, but as I recall, we chose to go with the Arizona Republic. They were going to be publishing it in their local section, the Glendale section, it comes out three times a week, and is distributed free in many locations. They have a, as I recall, again, just not knowing this was going to be a topic, they have a wide, they have still a strong circulation in the Glendale area. They do have an online presence. And so we chose to go with that. And as far as I recall, the price was pretty modest. I won't quote numbers right now because we don't have it. And that then brings me to my second point, and that is that we have a process that we use here among the council, and that's a council item of special interest, so that when someone has an idea, it can be presented, it can be scoped, it can, if the council agrees, they investigate it, then we can get a full, in essence, dossier, or whatever, we get full information about it so that we can make, you know, a good, reasonable decision on it. Personally, I don't think that the legislative update briefing is the time to throw out ideas to include, you know, I might have some on water policy that I'd like to toss out if, you know, nobody minded, or someone else might on other issues. But that's not the process that we use, and I don't think it's in our best interest. I think we should make sure, I think if somebody wants to introduce it, as I have an interest, it can be researched, we can make a reasoned decision on it, we have time to present it to League of Cities, and have them go through their process with it and see where we stand. So that's how I'd like to see us address this. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to speak to that specifically. Every year, we have a legislative agenda, and we are asked at that time, at this time, if there is anything we would like to see added to the agenda, and this is the opportunity for council to agree or disagree that it should become a legislative item of interest. We have never used a council item of special interest process to develop ideas for the legislative agenda, number one. Number two, the discussion that we had previously was specifically with regard to the process as it exists now, and what did we want to use, because we have no choice but to use that process. It was not a robust discussion of going onto digital and eliminating newspapers altogether because we did not have that option during the previous discussion. I think this discussion naturally flows because I believe it is a legislative item. I brought it up because we had had previous discussion about how we post and how we advertise, and I know that it's an issue, not just for this city, but for other cities, whether they're willing to take up the banner or not. So I find that my colleagues' remarks are a little bit off the mark today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
You looking for directions?
No, I'm just seeing if there's any other, any other comments. I, and again, I want to go back to what I first said. I think the city has done a great job stepping up to the current times. I mean, we could be drawing water out of a pail, out of a water well, but we choose to turn our faucets on. So I think doing things the way we've always done them, just because that's the way we've always done them, doesn't make sense to me. And the fact that if we're going to spend money, I'd rather spend money in our parks than give it to somebody for advertising that I think most people aren't reading. That's my personal feeling. And I was planning on bringing this up at the very end as a topic of consideration for the council. Councilmember Clark just basically made it easier for me to bring it up earlier. So at this point, is there a consensus to move forward with having him add this to the opportunity? And I'll be realistic, I don't think it'll pass, but I can tell you, I'm not going to lay back and allow media to beat me up because I'm trying to save taxpayers' money.
Mayor, if I could, thank you. So what would be the reason, if you feel like it's not going to pass, what would be the reason that we wouldn't try to be a little more strategic in how we do this, and try to work through the league? And then, nobody can say that we didn't try to work through the league. We tried to work through the league, and then if it, and then if it doesn't, if that process is unsuccessful, we can at least identify if we have any allies in this venture, and then move forward in the next legislative session, saying that we tried it through the league, we really believe in doing this, but we are, you know, we did it with essentially an established process for this type of thing. Especially because you just said you're feeling it's unlikely going to be, that it's going to be successful. So I just don't, I just, I mean, you guys are down there every day, so, you know, I mean, strategy is incredibly important in this kind of a thing. So I'm just curious, I mean, our odds, I would think, are better if we try it through the league first, and then whether that is successful in being part of the agenda. Their agenda for the next legislative session doesn't preclude us from still, if it's not going to be on their agenda, we can still pursue it on our own. I just feel like that would be a better strategy, in my opinion.
Again, I'm going to speak from my experience, eight years. The league doesn't guarantee anything, except for one thing. If you don't have the support from the league to begin with, then it drops, just drops. I don't want to go to the legislators and say, well, we tried to get it through the league, and the league didn't want to do it, because we're admitting defeat right off the bat. Most of the bills that go through are a lot of negotiating, a lot of tact and timing. I mean, it really is. It's an art. But understanding that you potentially are probably not going to get it through isn't a reason not to try. Going to a league where it's already been stated that it doesn't look like there's the will of a lot of people in other cities, that they're going to be standing there fighting for you, I can guarantee you, every one of them want to see it, but they won't publicly say that. And so I think that the city, I think that we should bring it up, I think we should try it, and if it fails, then we can sit back, we can say, it failed because this legislator had this issue, this legislator had this issue, this problem came up. And then you can reformulate, you can get your new tact, and then come back. And Marcus will tell you that that's the way the legislation usually works. Rarely do you ever get what you want the first time, the way you want it. Usually, it takes a lot of, a lot of negotiation. And so by not passing it the first year doesn't mean it fails, it just means that you didn't get through this time. Kind of like, I think, Coach Landry used to say that he never lost a football game, he just ran out of time.
Mayor? Yeah, I think I've heard enough. Pretty comfortable that the citizens will, will agree that being proactive is the right thing to do here. We give it a whack. If it doesn't work, hopefully, we get the, a second chance at it, and we have the league behind us. But we want to be successful, don't give up.
I have a question, Mayor. Thank you. How much do we spend on this annually? Does City Clerk or somebody have this?
I believe it, last fiscal year, we spent about $15,000, and we expect that price to increase because Arizona Republic's prices are higher.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with the comments to proceed and move forward. Many of us are in sales, and we know the answer's no unless you ask, so let's state our case and move forward with it. Thank you, Mayor.
I would also be in favor of moving forward. I don't think it hurts to ask and also get the issue out there for discussion.
Any other comments? Okay. What else do you need from us?
Just want to share again, my appreciation for the league. I don't, I don't mean to say that they're not advocating for us, they have. They've advocated for us in every, every issue that we've dealt with, and I'm grateful for their, their support to even the smallest community of 800 residents. And so really, just want to make sure that it's clear and on record that the league is there to support us. It's the timing issue through their process, they want to make sure they're not cross with their members. So, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Were you finished with your other things?
Yeah, just the last slide. We really work hard to make sure our residents know the resources that are available to them. We have a Legislative Link program, we send out weekly updates, each of you are on those, you'll know that the weekly update to the residents are different than what is, what we're updating the council on, because our audience is different in that regard. So we do, we produce that report every week. We have a website that shows all the information for your, how to find your congressman or woman on the federal level, how to find your legislator on the state level, and also how to gain additional information. So with that, Mayor, stand for questions.
Before you, before you sign off, would you ask the lobbyists to stand up so at least the council can see them? Okay, very good. Marcus is on our right. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I want to thank Mr. Ryan Lee for always keeping me updated. I know you keep the rest of the council updated, but you frequently keep me updated. We've had virtual meetings, we've had in-person meetings with legislators, so thank you. And I truly believe you're the right person for the role you're in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item three?
Proposed 2022 solid waste residential rates.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report on item number three today is our Director of Field Operations, Michelle Wataneko.
While she's doing it, do we have anybody that can turn that thermostat off? It's getting like cold up there.
Yeah, it is cold.
It's too cold.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Mayor and council, pleased to be here today to discuss with you our residential solid waste rates. I'm joined today by Ms. Amy Moreno, our solid waste superintendent. She's the one that runs our entire residential and commercial solid waste collection program. And then to her left is Charles Thomas, now our field operations administrator. He runs a lot of the administrative tasks. The biggest one within field operations is the budget, the financial forecasts. And we sit up here representing the group. I'd be remiss if I did not call out Ms. Kim Mackert, relatively new to the city. She's our financial analyst in field operations. She's the one that did the bulk of this effort. And also then, there's always Lisette Camacho in our budget and finance team that helps us with this. Today's presentation, we're going to cover with you the solid waste rate history, go through approximately the past 20 years and what we've done with rates. The services that these rates do cover, just to make sure that we're clear and transparent, because there is several enterprise funds within the city, solid waste is an enterprise fund, and it is solely supported by these fees that we collect. We want to make sure that everybody understands what services are being provided by this rate. We'll talk about innovations and efficiencies that we've completed to try and keep this rate as low as possible, our rate objectives. We'll talk about the cost of providing these services, and then go into the options with With that, I'm going to turn it over to Charles.
Mayor, members of council, good morning, good afternoon. As you can see, there's been four rate increases for solid waste over the last 16 years. There was a $0.40 increase in 2005, $1.40 increase in 2008. Staff proposed another $1.25 increase in 2010, that was not adopted. And then seven years later, in 2017, council approved two increases of $2.75 to be implemented in 2018 and 2019. This slide is directly from the September 2017 council workshop, where staff proposed another increase in 2023 and 2025. That same year, public outreach produced feedback that 38% of those surveyed preferred option one, which included the increases in 2023 and 2025. option one, which included the increases in 2023 and 2025.
Solid Waste provides weekly refuse and recycling collection, which is key to public health and safety. We also replace and repair damaged containers due to normal wear and tear. Other services we provide are monthly bulk trash collection and street sweeping. The street sweeping has been expanded to follow behind bulk trash in order to keep the street debris under control. That was a great suggestion, thanks to Councilmember Malnar. Thank you. Some other services that residents may not be aware of or familiar with are litter patrol services, which maintain through wayfares in the city, and the illegal dumping collection team. The illegal dumping collection team is funded through solid waste, but is managed through transportation. I would also like to mention, we do two annual household hazardous waste events. We support up to 750 appointments per event. And then also, residents can dispose of items up to one ton per month at the landfill.
So just because there was a question of how popular that was, that we did include that in our recycled survey, and we were able to determine about 6,400 households, and that may be multiple times, but 6,400 times the last fiscal year that residents took advantage of that free ton at the landfill. But that is included as part of your solid waste rate.
All of these services are important to our residents. In a recycling survey that was conducted at the end of 2020, 13% of active customers responded. Of that 13%, 83% felt that recycling is important to them, and 91% were willing to pay more to keep recycling. The biggest takeaway is 96% of all of our residents receiving these services felt that the services that they receive are good or very good. Although other municipalities provide solid waste services, each have a different structure. So it's challenging to get apples-to-apples comparisons, but because of that, we provided information from cities similar in size and comparable services. At a glance, it seems that Scottsdale and Avondale have a lower rate than us, but it is important to note that Glendale is one of the only cities that has street sweeping blended into its solid waste rates. In addition to that, both Scottsdale and Avondale have a higher container rate. In fact, Glendale has the lowest extra container rate of all the cities we compared to and the third lowest residential rate, excuse me. We will discuss the extra container fee in more detail later on in the presentation. So to summarize this, for services we provide, we currently have one of the lowest rates in the valley with arguably some of the best, if not the best, service. Currently, many other cities are planning on requesting higher rates soon.
In order to maintain an efficient operation, we have implemented some innovations to assist us in the effort. We've done some route enhancement software, which allows us to maintain efficient routes and services which maintain or potentially reduce fuel usage. This is going to be important with our upcoming developments that we have across the city. Will help us make sure that we are routing appropriately. We also have public facing web tools that teach residents about recycling in order to reduce contamination, and also provides residents with the status of their bulk trash service, which reduces our field inspection. Equipment replacement schedules, we've created a schedule for that in efforts to help keep equipment and technology current, which results in reduced repair costs and efficient fleet. If you kind of think about your personal vehicle that you drive around, an average person drives an estimated 14,000 miles a year. And a passenger vehicle, these days are built to run anywhere from 200,000 to 300,000 miles, depending on, you know, how well you maintain it. If you take a look at, and it could take you up to 14 to 20 years to actually get that high mileage. If you take a look at a sideload truck, due to the demand of the service that they provide in the daily driving, they easily drive over 35,000 miles a year. Thus, they reach that 200,000 mile mark within the six, right around the six-year mark of the vehicle being in service. There's also the wear and tear on the vehicle. An example of this is the operation of the mechanical arm, which provides service to containers, so it picks it up, dumps it, puts it back down. That service cycle that that truck goes through, it does that approximately 206,000 times a year. So you can imagine the demand on that piece of equipment and the repairs that it needs to keep that maintaining properly. So it's very important to maintain that replacement plan in order to reduce and avoid costly repairs.
Our overall objective is to provide quality service while maintaining public health and safety at the lowest possible cost to our citizens. To keep our rates fair and reasonable, and we'll do this by benchmarking against valley cities as well as private services. Another objective is to provide revenue stability, and to do so by developing long-term five-year plans and rate models that allow our finance departments to use these models while speaking with our bond agencies, to meet our financial targets as adopted by council, which is an ending fund balance of 10% of our operating expenses annually. And lastly, we will always evaluate full life cost on our vehicles to allow us to replace them prior to more costly repairs are needed. You may have already seen evidence of this in some of your neighborhoods as we've reduced the amount of hydraulic oil spills throughout the streets.
This slide here is based on fiscal year 20. This is a monthly cost breakdown of providing services. Based on these numbers, there have been a significant increase in cost of providing services across the board. In fiscal year 20, the cost for providing weekly refuse collections is $10.30, which has increased 82% compared to fiscal year 17. Part of this increase is due to higher tonnage, equipment maintenance, and replacement expenses. Our recycling cost is up by 10% compared to fiscal year 17 at $5.93. Bulk trash has increased by 38%, is now at $5.92. And lastly, in 2017, we were street sweeping monthly, excuse me, quarterly, and now we've increased that to monthly, and that cost has increased 113% to $1.62. That's a total of $23.77 to provide service. Again, our current rate is $21.80, so we are not recovering $1.92 to provide our monthly service. Some of the major cost drivers for providing service are salaries and benefits, which have increased 90%, largely due to the cost of living salary increases over the years, in additional staff that have been added the past several years as approved by council. The cost to offload tonnage at our city landfill has also increased by 27%. Another major cost factor is equipment maintenance, kind of talked about that a little bit. This is 83% is due to labor costs for maintenance and increased costs to parts for the specialized equipment. 54% of our current solid waste fleet is made by a manufacturer that is no longer in business. And due to that, we lost a lot of warranty work on the vehicles and reduced repair work in parts that the manufacturer would typically provide a warranty on. This means now that all those items that need to be ordered, the parts, they have to be specially ordered. The rush delivery, so that we can make sure that we have proper vehicles on the road to be able to maintain our timely service. If we don't have that appropriate amount of vehicles, that could cost overtime to make sure that we do provide service. The cost to replace equipment has gone up 24% as we've seen, excuse me, seen an increase for medical, medical, excuse me, metal and electronic components. I'm sure you all are aware of that as well. And lastly, the insurance and indirect costs have increased by 54%.
COVID-19 has also played a role in...
Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, pardon me. Ms. Moreno, back to the materials and shop supplies that have increased in cost. Did you, do you guys have data to support that, or are you just, just by way of the market and knowing it, or do you have data that supports that? Not right now, but do you have?
Yeah, I don't have, excuse me, Mayor and councilmembers, I don't have exact numbers, but I can tell you that other cities that use that vendor have also seen the same increases for the equipment repair cost and parts.
If a citizen isn't familiar with ordering parts to the extent that we do, they would probably feel better on an increase like this, or a suggested increase, if they had that data, so maybe you can bring some examples around of what costs are for shop supplies and parts and materials versus what they were a couple of years ago?
Mayor, councilmembers, if you have something to do with...
Thank you.
Hold on.
Thank you, Mayor. What would be an example of an indirect cost other than insurance?
Mayor, councilmembers, our indirect costs, other than like workers' compensation insurance, that's also, this is set up as an enterprise fund, and so annually, we pay back our proportionate support to the general fund, so a percentage of the attorney's office finance, just for those support charges, but the majority of this increase has been through our insurance increases.
Okay, thank you.
COVID-19 has also played a role in the increase of cost of service. There was an increase for demand of service as work from home increased residential loads, home remodeling and construction increased bulk trash loads. Homeowners cut down on some of their landscaping services to do it themselves, and some of them were home, so that increased some of our loads. Cost of supplies and services increased as well. As Amy mentioned, equipment replacement costs increased. Supply chain issues caused us to have some delays in getting those parts. Oftentimes, the delivery of the part might have been the same cost as the part itself, depending on if the warehouse we were ordering from had COVID impacts inside their location. Wanted to mention, there's something a little bit personal to us. There was a huge impact to staff. In the beginning, many staff members, before there was a vaccine available, many staff members were experiencing COVID-like symptoms, and our solid waste department still responded. We lost a member of our solid waste department. A well-liked employee, his name's Tom Pena. We lost him during that time, and I just wanted to go through that and recognize when the CDC guidelines say you have to stay at home for three weeks, trash still got picked up, bulk trash still got picked up. There's a lot more first responders in our city, we have police, we have fire, water worked through this, but our solid waste department worked through it as well. Like I said, this is pre-vaccine, they showed up, they did the job, and they performed well. We had minimal lapse of service, if any, and we were impacted by overtime because of that, but I just wanted to kind of go over a little bit of that, not just the financial portion of it, but it certainly was an emotional impact. It caused us to have overtime, but it was a huge impact across the board. So on camera, on record, I wanted to thank the solid waste department, the drivers, everyone in the offices, the admin staff, for performing for the residents throughout this difficult time.
As Charles mentioned, there was a demand in service. We've put this together for you to illustrate the true impact of bulk trash. Starting from fiscal year 17, from the left, going to the right to fiscal year 22, this is a 25% of the cost that we, to provide service. As you can see, that each year, it starts to trend upwards. If you do notice, take a look at kind of the middle there, fiscal year 19, the gray block there. The reason why that one's a little bit higher is that summer, we had a bunch of monsoon storms that created a lot of debris that we collected, so that's why you see the big difference from fiscal year 18 to fiscal year 19. But if you continue to look through past, going through the fiscal years, it continues to increase. We have included fiscal year 22 as a projection, and we keep an eye on that tonnage every month, and that tonnage is still continuing to trend upwards. Even past COVID-19, the trash that's being placed out is still continuing to trend higher.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. My comments are what the two of us talked about last week, or maybe earlier this week, but, so I agree that it cost us more during the pandemic, and even probably now more so back in the earlier parts of the pandemic, due to the fact that people were staying home and they were chucking things out, right? And so I feel that we're probably going to level back out, people are going back to work. Wouldn't you anticipate the cost will be when the trend goes back to normal? Now, I don't know if it'll go back 100% to normal, but I certainly don't think it's going to be what it was during the pandemic.
Mayor and council, the intent of this graph was to show you pre-pandemic, the rate that we were increasing, and this is the tons that we collect, so this is the volume of material we collect. You know, fiscal year 20, that includes, you know, March, April, May of, June of 2020, when really people had that stay at home. 21 was the rest of that fiscal year, so you can see 21 increased. 22, we haven't seen it slow down. And Amy said, you know, we monitor it every month, we monitor it every week, we monitor it every day to make sure we're staying up. So we have not seen it level off yet, and that's, we were kind of waiting to see, is it going to level off, or is it a one-time bump? And we haven't seen that yet. So we're going to continue to stay on top of this, but we have not yet seen any sort of indication that this is leveling off.
And this isn't cost, this is actual tonnage that you picked up.
This is correct.
So, yeah, I still believe in it, just want the citizens to know that, yeah, I trust that there was an increase. I do believe, though, it'll trend off, it's just not happening yet, but...
I think we had a similar discussion, but the one thing that I was thinking about is our growth. The phenomenal growth that we've had in six years equates to more people, more bodies, more tonnage. So even when things start leveling back off where people are working, we've still got more people. So I don't know what it'll end up being, it'll be interesting to see. I guess only time's going to tell on that for sure, but I do have to trust what you folks have been doing, you've been doing a good job.
Thank you, Mayor. It's more than just a few, we get the additional households, we track tons per household per month, and that has gone up since fiscal year 17 and continues to go up. So we are, we're looking at it every week, every month, we want to see it flatten off, change the rate, change the rate of growth, so we are constantly looking at that, but this is more than just adding residents into the city.
I was going to echo what you said, Mayor, because we know that more households are being added every day. We know what the projection is for the futures, especially for the Uckah district, that there are a substantial number of new households that will be completed in the next two to three years. So while I agree that the tonnage has increased right now, I really do attribute that to COVID, and I think we will see the amount of tonnage per household level off, but in the meantime, we will continue to see dramatic growth in the number of households that we service, so it makes sense. Thank you.
Now that we've reviewed the rate history, the cost drivers, the COVID impact of providing service, I'd like to transition to discuss rates. This is a graphical representation of what it would look like if we did nothing, which is always an option, but not a fiscally responsible one. As you can see, each year, we draw down on our fund balance... As you can see, each year, we draw down on our fund balance, and the impact of that trend over the, over five years is projected to be around $15 million. There will be similar graphs in the following slides that will illustrate the impact of the rate structures that we're going to present to council today. Before we proceed, I'd like to explain this graph in a little bit more detail. The orange line represents the overall revenues we receive through our rate structure. The blue line represents the total expenses, including capital. The purple line represents the capital component separate, and the vast majority of that is vehicle replacement costs. So the upcoming slide will preview, excuse me, will review a few options and some comparison graphs.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. With regard to the slide that you just presented, I, I fail to see why the orange line would remain basically flat. I don't have my glasses on, so I can't read the numbers. Because of the increase in households, you're going to get more revenue with or without a rate increase, because you're going to have more households paying for it. So explain to me why you chose to make that orange line flat across.
Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Clark, the orange line does increase over time, and the projected increase is strictly growth-related. And we, we got those numbers from our development services, planning, as well as economic development. And we also, water services, we, all of us together use the same residential growth projections. So that's, the orange line does increase over time, and it's based upon the residential growth projections.
Okay, why, why is it a flat line, though?
It is, there is an increase to the line.
Thank you. Okay.
So, Mayor and council, we did review these rate, potential rate adjustments with the Citizens Utility Advisory Commission. We talked with them in September to get their feedback on what we were doing. And then we met with them on November 3 of this, so this month. And they provided us with consensus to move all these options forward to discuss with council. This first option, and we listened a lot to Mayor and council in the discussions with water services, and this is a levelized approach. So we looked at the minimum amount that we could raise a year and keep it level every year for five years, and get us to a specific amount that would maintain fund balance. So this option represents a total increase of $6 over the five years. A dollar, so it's $1.20 a year for five years. And that rate in 2026 is $27.80. If you look at that same graph, and it's exactly what Mr. Thomas just explained to you, he left the purple, orange, and blue the same. This is the impact of $1.20 a year over five years. And on the far right side of the slide, you can see the five-year total projected impact to the fund is $1,290. And that's not a, you know, it's not in certain dollar amounts, it's actually $1,290. So when we discussed this, there was a request that, you know, could we have a different flat rate that would get us to something better, that would add more to the fund than just $1,290? And we looked at it, and it's approximately $1.45 a month if we wanted to do a levelized increase and go the same amount year over year. What that does, though, is it's $1.25 more to that end rate over the five years. And again, that's just a very quick back of the napkin, because we did not then look at the different components of what that revenue brings in, what it changes. That was just a very quick, we think it's approximately $1.45 a month to do a, an option that would be the same amount per year, but over the five years, not have a $1,200 positive impact to the fund, but more bring the fund up. Because if you look at the line, the orange line, that's our operating expenses. And at that point, we're $20 million. And so we should have a $2 million fund balance at that point. So really, we need to be adding about $700,000 to the fund balance from what it, what it is today. So that was the first approach we looked at. The second one was, we looked back to what we presented in 2017, and we had, at that time, projected $1.25 and $1.75. And we looked at if we could do approximately the same, so $1.75, $1.25, we flipped them. And then what would we need then in the future? And it came out to be 2770 would be our ending rate over the five years. The last three become almost inflationary. And this, the difference between this one and that first one where it's levelized, because we do a larger increase sooner, is that overall, this is 10 cents less. So your new base rate at the end of 2026 is 10 cents left, less than it would be in option one. When you look at the overall impact of the fund over the five years, you see, because we are raising rates quicker, the drawdown of the fund balance in 2022 is less, 2023 is a break even. And then over the five years, we're adding one point, almost $2 million to the fund balance. So we not only meet the requirement, we meet the requirement in 2026 with the new increased fund balance requirement, as we're always trying to maintain that 10%. But still, you know, a drawdown over the first two years of it. And the third option we looked at was, you know, a larger increase upfront. So it would be $3 currently, and then you drop it to essentially inflation over the next five years. What this gets you at the end of the five years is it's the lowest overall monthly base rate for solid waste services. It's 15 cents less than option one, and 5 cents less than option two. And what this does to the, the overall fund is over five years, you still draw down a little bit this year, we're already well into 22. Next year is essentially break even. And then over the five years, you're adding $3 million to the fund balance, which, you know, just adds that little bit more stability for us. The other item that we showed when we compared the other cities was an extra container fee. What an extra container is, is this is where a resident would call voluntary service. We do not force this on anybody, but if they want extra solid waste services, we can provide them with an extra curbside container they can use. We currently charge $6.67 a month. That is not covering its cost of service. And what we looked at doing was getting a full cost recovery in the first two years, and then take it up inflationary beyond that. So it doesn't matter, any of the prior three options, we'd be looking at this as an extra container fee rate. So, Mayor and council, kind of to summarize what we've just been through, I know I'm very proud of the solid waste services that we provide, but through the surveys, comments with the citizens, we've, we've heard from them that they are also very pleased with the services. When we did the recycling survey, we found out they did not want the services cut, they did not want them changed. We did not, so we looked at keeping them as, as consistent as possible. Our solid waste costs are consistently trending upwards. I think every cost of service right now is trending upwards. We are continuing to look at any sort of innovation and efficiency to assist us in keeping our operational rates as low as possible. Ms. Moreno touched on our new routing. That's going to help us tremendously in the upcoming years to evaluate, could we go to every other week recycling? And what the implications might be for that, hopefully, not even revenue neutral, but savings on that. Our rate objectives are fair and reasonable. We try and keep our rates reasonable and just, such that we are providing a great service at the lowest cost possible. We also then looked at, within the options, to provide that support for future unknowns and growth. Provide a little bit of contingency there in case something else happens that we might not be aware of. And finally, the extra container fee. And we would like, no matter which rate council would suggest, we would ask for that extra container fee. With that, it is staff recommendation. Option two, it gets us there fairly quick. We understand the potential burden to the residents, so we would recommend council look at our option two rate increase, and then the extra container fee increase. And Mayor, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I really think option three, in my mind, is the best way to proceed. Because if you, option two, over the first two years, you get to a $3 increase. But the five-year projected impact to the fund balance is substantially higher to do that in the first year. I mean, it's almost double. It almost doubles it from one point, what is the other amount? And it's also the lowest overall increase. It's 5, 5.65? 5.85. Option three is a $5.85 increase. Option one is $6, and option two is 5.90. So it's the lowest overall increase, but it has the biggest impact on our fund balance. So, and then after the first, first year, the increases are nominal, 75 cents, 70 cents, and 65 cents. So just, you know, I mean, if this was me planning for my own, my own budget, I mean, the end result, literally with the lowest overall increase on option three, gets your fund balance up over $3 million. So that's kind of where I'm at with, with the three options. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. As I considered, you know, this presentation, the impacts on our citizens, you know, several things came to mind. The first one was what was mentioned earlier, that we have, we have doubled the cost of our street sweeping, because we're now doing it monthly, which we were, we were doing it quarterly. And that's all part of this increase. But also our recycling. We've had a lot of discussions about recycling, and we've done public reviews and input on that. And the public wants us to continue to recycle, even though we don't recover the costs by recycling. And that's an additional cost. And so I, these, along with, you know, looking at it overall, you know, in five years, $27.80 for a service of picking up my bulk trash, picking up my recycling, picking up my weekly trash, it's a real bargain. And so I think the citizens will recognize that we're not, we're not raising rates to, the city's not gaining money on this. This is a cost recovery process. And so I really want to give some kudos to the department for putting this together in a clear manner that makes it clear to the public that what we are trying to do here is provide a, a better service at the least cost possible. And as far as which, which, which plan we use, you know, B or C, either one would work for me. I understand C would gain some benefit. But at the same time, I also would like to see us try to even out the upfront costs. It may not be a lot, you know, we're talking a couple of dollars a month, but nevertheless, impact does build up, and that's why we have a fund balance. But that fund balance will also build up at the end of the five-year period. It'll continue to build up. And so either one of those plans would work for me, and I would be in favor of moving forward this program. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I actually support option two, what staff's recommending. I think for the main reason, the shock that we're all going to experience when the new rate comes out and the citizens start calling, you know, the $3 may not sound a lot to a lot of people that are currently working, but when you start looking at your senior citizens, people that are unemployed right now, that's real. It's real. With the economy, I'm concerned about prices being dramatically higher in every, every life, life aspect right now, all the different costs that we're all facing. I like the idea of trying to keep it a little bit lower and still accomplishing your goal. I think option two does that for me. Go ahead.
I, surprisingly, I have no, no preference for options, and will support whatever the majority of council decides. I would say option two or option three. But I wanted to publicly commend this department for the presentation. You have clearly laid out what is driving the cost increase. The salaries and benefits, the landfill costs, equipment maintenance, equipment replacement, insurance. All of these are going up, not because we wish them to go up, but because of the current economic conditions in the country. It is a clear, balanced presentation. And I'll tell you what I like the very best. There's no compounding of the rates year, year after year. It's a flat, whatever we choose will be a flat dollar amount that people will know. It's going, whether it's going to be $1.75 or $1.25, we're not going to compound that $1.75 and that $1.25 year, year over year. So for more reasons than I'm going to articulate, I support your request for a rate increase. This is the one service I think that everybody in the city loves. I love having my bulk trash picked up. And I think everybody that uses it loves having their bulk trash picked up. And I think the second thing is, is you can count on the service. You know it's not going to be ignored in any given week, that you can count on your day of service, which is, is important to a lot of people, that kind of consistency. I, I can't say enough good things about this department and about your presentation. Thank you for doing such a good job, and I'll support whatever rate increase the majority of council opts for.
Pleasure.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I agree. It's a hard-working department. I, when I met with you, I talked about, I watch the bulk trash goes by, they're working hard. The truck, that stuff in the containers, I don't know how you can do it all day long. That truck just shakes nonstop, and he hit the next one, doing, he's faster than the mailman going around the block. I'm in favor of option two, and I think it is a bargain for the citizens. They appreciate what the city is doing. We're talking about the bulk trash. We do a great job on that, and the citizens really like it. And I'm with the street sweeping, following it. It's a perfect setup, and I'm excited about it. It's option two is my favorite.
Mr. Obama.
Thank you, Mayor. I too will thank you for your presentation. When we met in person, I said justify your rate increase request, and you did, and that's all I can ask for. Look, there's a cost of service for what you provide, the street sweeping, the bulk trash. And unfortunately, that service has increased the cost for that service. And I get a lot of compliments from our community and the work that you guys do out there, including the alley work. So I'm supportive. I'm supportive of the rate increase and the option two. Question, though, I have is, I didn't see it in the presentation, I didn't hear anyone say, was there a recommendation from the commission? I know, and you said they recommended all three, but was there one they favored?
Mayor and council, Councilmember Obama, I think the discussion is pretty similar to what council's having tonight. They did prefer two and three versus one, but they did give us the consensus to move all three forward.
Okay, thank you. Good work. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad that you pointed out the survey results that showed the really extremely high level of satisfaction that our customers have for the service they get from this department. I hear it from my residents as well, and I experience it. As a Glendale resident, this is a terrific department, and they're doing a very difficult job, and they're doing it in an excellent fashion. So I want to make sure that, that anybody who might be watching out there from the department, or word gets back to the department, that how much we appreciate that. I wish we had these kinds of surveys on all of our departments, so we could, with real data, establish the quality of service we're providing our customers. But I'm happy we have it here. I have a couple of questions. So in the graphs, the revenue line is the gold line, and the expense line is the blue line. In the earlier years here, where the revenue line is below, the gold revenue line is below the blue line, and we have a shortfall, how does that shortfall, obviously, that shortfall's made up somehow, because we're still doing a terrific job. How does that shortfall get made up?
Mayor and Council, Councilmember Turner, we have a fund balance today, and what we are doing is we're drawing it down. And we then look at the timing of our capital expenditures and try and time them to make sure that we've got the cash to pay for it. Option 1, while it gets us there, is very, very tight, and I'd have to be working very closely with our budget and finance team on Option 1. So we are drawing down fund balance today and through '22 in these scenarios.
And as I recall, all three of these proposals draw down fund balance just to a different degree in the early years.
That's correct.
And that, so it's not just we have a shortfall. And I'm asking this, you know, to a point, not because I wasn't paying attention, but to a point. So the goal, in my mind, should be that we, in, let's say, in a number of whatever years the council should decide, I think 5 is a good number, that's what we're dealing with here, that we should be able to meet our expenses as well as meet the fund balance that council policy has set as required for each of our funds, and we're talking about this one in particular. So do any of these actually get us to the council policy fund balance in five years?
Mayor and Council, Councilmember Turner, so the fund balance is, the requirement is 10% of our operating expenses. And so with that, we've got it modeled out, but we look at it every year and adjust it every year as to what that balance needs to be. Options 2 gets us right there over five years, and Option 3 gets us above that requirement with a little bit of a cushion.
Okay, so above the council policy.
Correct.
A little bit more. What I like about Option 1 is that it's a consistent rate increase over each of the next five years. What I like about Options 2 and 3 is it gets us to the council policy of being satisfied, and that is that we will have a fund balance in the fifth year. You mentioned early in your presentation that to be able to get to that goal, having, meeting our expenses and having the proper fund balance, but doing it with a consistent increase over each of the five years would cost about $1.45 or so a year. And that's the number, that's what I wish we were looking at, a consistent increase over five years that got us to the fund balance goal. So that would be my preference, that we go that route. Thank you.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
There's just one other thing that I was thinking about that has nothing to do with rate increases, but that I wanted to share, because I have a feeling that all council members have experienced this. But I get occasional notes from residents thanking the city for its exceptional service in this area. And I had one note recently where a resident said that there was a senior on the street who was unable to, had difficulty in putting out the garbage cans and taking them back in. And when the driver became aware of this, the driver got out of the truck and pushed the garbage cans back up to the resident's house. And this happens frequently. They often go above and beyond the level of service that is required as a minimum. And I wanted to point that out, that this is an exceptional department that has shown, each individual within the department has shown its love of community and is willing to go above and beyond in terms of service. And that's irrelevant to a rate discussion, but I did want to put that out there. Thank you.
Anything else?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to -- I guess I turned it off, not on. The, I believe, in our conversation, you said that the fund balance, ideal fund balance is somewhere around $2.25 million or somewhere in that. Is that right? Based on what our numbers are right now, ideally, our fund balance would be around $2.5 million. And only one of these options gets us there. So...
So Mayor and Councilmember Tomalchov, you are correct. When I went back and looked in more detail, we were off the top of our heads giving you an estimated fund balance requirement based upon, and this was our total expenditures. When we look back at the requirement, it's 10% of our operating expenditures. And so we estimated in year 5 on this slide, we would need $2 million fund balance. We don't quite need that, but I haven't gone into the details to determine what that is. So we did state that to you. I was incorrect earlier, and I apologize for that.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I do want to ensure, because we asked then also for the additional, the extra container fee increase, to ensure that we have council consensus on that.
Okay, so first thing, I heard 1 for 3, 1 for 1. I heard 3 for 2 and a couple that didn't really care. Is there a consensus for Option 2?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, so Option 2 is fine. Is there a consensus for the rate increase on the additional refuge?
Yes.
Can?
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, and the icicles are forming back up here again, so with that said, if we could introduce Item 4, please.
Council Item of Special Interest, cell tower located at Fire Station 156.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report is Don Bessler, our Director of Engineering. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Is my mic on?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. The mayor, council members, I'm here to present you an update on the cellular monopole. This is a CACI item, council item of special interest. And as you know, it was requested by Councilmember Tomalchov on August 24. In your packet, there is a copy of the approved scoping statement, which is part of the process we go through to move council items of special interest forward. To give you a little background, the monopole at this site, the agreement with the city was initiated back in 2008 with T-Mobile. It was, excuse me, it was for a five-year agreement with five successive five-year renewal terms, so that would be a total of 30 years. The initial installation was a stealth flagpole, so it was an enlarged-looking flagpole that held cellular equipment with inside of it. The annual rent at the time this agreement was put together in 2008 was $23,988 a month, I'm sorry, a year. It also had an escalator clause, so that the city's rent for this site went up by 3% a year. So in 2021, the rent that will be collected will be $38,843. In 2019, there was an amendment to the agreement that the city agreed to. It allowed from changing out from a stealth flagpole to a monopole, I'm sorry, a monopole elm tree. The other elements of that change in the contract, the amendment to the contract, was that there was a revenue sharing component that was added on top of the rent. That was a percentage of the revenue that was collected, and to date, since that agreement went into place, the city's collected about $22,000 in additional fees. It also created covered parking that was paid for by T-Mobile for the employees of that facility. That's been installed. And the reason that the pole was changed at that time was to provide better service in that area, and also to do co-location for different service providers. And as we've made comments to you in the past when we've done small cell and cellular technology updates, the idea of co-location is a positive thing, because it allows us to reduce the proliferation of poles that would otherwise need to be placed throughout the community, because every carrier would have to do their own individually. As additional part of the background, there's been concerns raised by some of the neighbors that are immediately adjacent to the facility. The council, Councilmember Tomalchov and the city manager have taken numerous efforts to try to address the concerns that have been raised to them. As well, this city council approved additional money this current, or this past fiscal year to make landscaping improvements for the purpose of screening. And the council member, Councilmember Tomalchov, has also used her district funds to address and mitigate some of the aesthetic issues that have been raised by the neighbors.
How much, how much were the landscaping and then the additional other funds?
Mayor, the, I can't give you an exact number, but I do know that when we came forward to do a fund balance update and the AZ CARES funds, I believe you appropriated an additional $75,000 to be used for not only landscaping, but also painting that facility. So I know those things have happened. I don't know what the breakdown was between those two cost items. And as I said, the council member has used her own district funds to try to address this issue. I would say, as you go forward to discuss this, clearly, it's your decision on how you want to proceed with this, but staff would have a recommendation, and we would offer it at the appropriate time, but we don't want to cut off any discussion. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mayor. I presented all of you, I think, around the time we were doing Budget with a packet on, with some photos, and also our own design guidelines. These are the City of Glendale wireless design guidelines. And one of the design guidelines is, on freestanding monopole sites, the tower should be located in a site in a manner which helps to minimize views from existing future residences and nearby streets. And I'm, I would contend that this doesn't do that. This is from people's, I gave you all these during Budget, but I'll pass them around. You can look at these, what these people are looking at from inside. I've been inside some of these houses. I had five residents participate in the landscape allowance, which was to sort of try to mitigate, obviously, you really can't mitigate this with a tree. I mean, it's impossible. You'd need a gigantic tree.
How much was it?
What is it?
How much was it?
Landscape. Oh, $2,000 per resident. There's a couple people who have not participated, and it also has come, been brought to my attention, not from anybody in Glendale, but from the International Association of Firefighters, that they actually, the residents are concerned about safety. They're concerned about RF. There are no, there's, with 5G, there's still a lot of questions about safety, about long-term effects of exposure to 5G, and these radio frequency waves, you know, constant waves, in a pretty short distance to where people are living and residing. And that's the issue, is these people have small children, they're concerned about the long-term effects. And there, you can find studies that tell you both things. You can find studies that tell you that they're harmless, but you can also find studies that tell you that there's more childhood leukemia, there's increased cell growth of brain cancer. There are some early discussions that have happened outside of Arizona of firefighters that have, that have, that have brain cancer a result of a monopole, they believe, at a fire station, because they're living there. So my ask is that we do not renew the lease. There's, there's health concerns, there's, there's property mitigation concerns, the value of a home. I, if I came home, and that was in, I could see that from my kitchen, which some of those homes you can, I know myself, I would not be happy about that. And I feel like, as a city, we should be the best neighbors. Unfortunately, the FCC is yet to rule on the safety of these radio frequencies that these tower, mono towers are emitting. And it's not our job to say whether they're safe or whether they're not safe, but the point is, we can't say for sure that there's no harms going to come to anybody that's located, living adjacent to this tower. So, I mean, I don't know how this works, whether this would need to come back to a workshop at a future date. At that point, I would, I would, I'm expecting some correspondence from somebody in the International Association of Firefighters. At this point today, I do not have that. But I can tell you that, overall, the International Association of Firefighters does not want these towers located on their property for the safety of their firefighters. And the residents feel the same way, that they shouldn't be this located this close to their homes, because they cannot, nobody right at this point can guarantee the safety of these radio frequencies being emitted from these gigantic towers, so. Mayor.
Mr. Aldama.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm a little confused. I'm supportive of the council members' request to get rid of an agreement, but that only solves one issue. And I don't have it in front of me, but Mr. Freedline gave us a map of where these poles are. So remind me of where those poles are, and if we do this, are we going to trigger to remove all the rest of the poles that are harming families and, I'm saying, because, yeah, I can support that. I think we're opening up a can of worms. So can you please tell me that there's other locations in, not just my district, but other places in the city where there's poles that have a similar effect to families, just as the council members' district? If so, what are we doing about it?
So Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, I can address that.
Okay.
If, so the whole issue of cellular technology has ramped up, obviously, in our lives, and with the first presentation that we did to you was back in September of 20. And we talked broadly about cellular technology and small cell. And then we did a follow-up, myself and Ryan Lee, in January of this past year. And then in June, you guys asked a series of questions similar to what you just posed, and we sent a memo out to you that we identified where these large cell towers were located throughout the city. There's 99 of them, if I'm not mistaken, that are located throughout the city. 14 of them are on city property. There's a number of them in the right-of-way, and there are many, many more that are on private property, some version of private property, which could include school districts, other governmental entities. We just call it private property if it's not the city or not a PUE or the right-of-way. So roughly, there's 100 of these things in our community. That, I think, if your point was that there's potential unintended consequences to decisions, I would say that would be a high probability. As you all know, we do not regulate the proliferation of cellular technology. That's regulated by the federal government. We have some limited authority on the placement of cellular technology. We have more authority on the placement of cellular technology on city properties. But I will also tell you that there are any number of cellular installations, including large poles, that are in our PUE and in our right-of-ways. So a determination to move one from one place to another doesn't necessarily mean that you're accomplishing maybe what your underlying objective would be, which is to take it out of somebody's line of sight, or potentially address some other health issue that may be weighing on you. So yes, it is a, it is a big nut.
Mayor, if I may, continue. So how is it, and I may have missed it, how is it that we have an opportunity to end this agreement, but not 99 of the others? And look, and I just want to be clear to the residents in the council members' district. Look, I'm supportive to make them safe, make their community aesthetically pleasing. I want to continue to do that. I won't stop today. But we have 99 more of these poles. It was my council member, I had an interest last year to bring up these cell towers, and then we ended up with the council member's request as well. We really didn't get anywhere. I think what we did is, we refined the construction process and the notification and communication process. We did absolutely nothing to resolve the dangers and the aesthetics of these poles in our communities. So how is it that we can end a contract that's got about 30 years on it in one community, but not in the others?
So Mayor, council member, I can't speak to every agreement that the city's written over the years, but I would just speak to it broadly. This specific installation is on city property, different than the PUE, different than the right-of-way. So you have a level of authority over city property. You have other installations that you've allowed on city property. I can't tell you, because I'm not familiar with what those agreements may have looked like. We certainly can provide that information. And then anything that was permitted in the right-of-way isn't an agreement, but it went through some sort of a construction permitting process, so that it was installed according to the processes and procedures for installations in the right-of-way. But it wouldn't necessarily have an agreement.
Mayor, if I may, continue. So, and do this, because it's been a while that we've gotten that report from you. But I'd like to know, then, of the 99 poles that are in public property, just as this one is, how many of those that are in public property are causing the same assumed dangers and aesthetics as this same pole? That's what I'd like to know. Because if there's, if citizens, if we approve this today, citizens are going to be calling, at least me, and saying, "Do the same thing with these poles. Nobody wants them." But I learned through our team that there's not much you can do. So I'd like to know, of the 99 in public that are causing the same nuisance, I'd like to know where they are. Are they, are they the same and equal? And why aren't we doing anything about those? Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor.
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, again, of the 99, the largest percentage are on other private property. So the city... So the city wouldn't have authority on other private properties, except through the zoning code when it was originally put in. So I can't speak to it more specifically than that.
Public property.
But I will also say that it is not uncommon for anybody that would be adjacent to a large installation to have aesthetic concerns. I would say that's probably a common concern. As relates to the public health aspects of this, as Councilmember Tomachoff has pointed out, the FCC has ruled on that and regulates it. We don't have the authority, nor do we have the expertise internally to really address that, other than we recognize that people have concerns about it.
Yeah, and, and just to the, to Councilmember Tomachoff, thank you for stepping up for your constituents. My comments have nothing to do with the fact that I'm jealous or anything like that. I just, if we're going to open a can of worms, let's, let's make sure we're doing things across the city. But no, I, I commend her for, for that work.
Mayor, may I speak? Thank you. You must have missed the part where I talked about, how many of these are located at fire stations in Glendale?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, I might, I think this might be the only one. We have a number.
I believe it is.
We have a number located in city parks. I believe we have at least one, if not multiple, at water treatment facilities. So we can get you that specific list, but I believe this would be the only one at a fire station.
Right. And the, and the issue is, the International Association of Firefighters does not want these monopoles located at fire stations. Now, I don't, I'm not speaking for anybody in Glendale, and I haven't spoken to anybody in Glendale about this issue, but I am aware that it is an issue, a potential carcinogenic issue for firefighters, that we already have, you know, issues with our firefighters, with the hazards of their job, you know, coming down with cancer. So the, the, the safety issue is, is a huge part of it, probably the bigger part of it. But the, and I pass that down, but the, for me, the issue is, is that we didn't even follow our own design guidelines when we put this in. There was no effort to mitigate how this looked. I mean, the aesthetics of it are, are important, but the health issue, the health concerns are even more important. But my, from the very beginning, this was never, we never even followed our own process for installing that pole. There was nothing done to try to mitigate the, how that, how it looked from, you know, any of the residences around there. So that's a step that was missed, that's a step that needs to be, you know, taken every time we allow one of these. And I get it, that this, everybody wants 5G, but nobody wants the poles anywhere, anywhere near them. I understand the dilemma with that, and I understand the economics of it, too. And this, by the way, is not, Councilmember Aldama, not a 30-year lease. This is a lease that can be terminated in February of 2023 with one-year notice. That's what's written into the, into the council report, and that's what I'm asking, is for the council to consider not renewing this lease, because the lease is expiring. I don't know what the status is of all the other leases that you're referring to, but this lease is, has, can be terminated. Thank you.
Mr. Phelps.
I just want to clarify, the, the code requires you take steps to minimize. They use that word intentionally because you cannot eliminate. Minimize is an effort to make it less impactful. And to say that we haven't taken action to make it less, to minimize the impacts, I don't believe Councilmember Tomachoff is correct. The fact that it was required to be one of decorative, the color scheme, the location of it, were designed to try to minimize, recognizing that when you put a pole that large, that you're not eliminating impact to that area. But I don't think it's 100% correct to say that we did nothing as a staff to minimize the, you know, this. We did work very closely with the industry to try to get a co-location, and, which means that we were able to reduce other towers in that area to go to one tower, rather than have four or five that would be spread out, which they could do. So I just, I think it's a little bit unfair to say that we just, we let them build what they wanted to build. We did take steps to try to minimize.
Mr. Phelps, I did not say we did nothing. And actually, I did not say we did nothing, but I said the tower should be located on a site in a manner which helps minimize views from existing structures, so possibly it should have been able to be located there, number one. Number two, trees with tall canopy heights and other landscaping should be used to help screen towers and related facilities from surrounding views. Now, that happened, but not until, it wasn't part of, of installing the tower. That was after residents got upset, after I tried with the, that was, the, the trees that were planted and in the budget were a year or almost after I worked through, with the neighbors through and with the city attorney's office, to try to offer a landscape allowance so that they could mitigate how it looked from their yard. So I never said nobody did anything, but we didn't follow our design guidelines because we should have tried to place the pole in a, in a manner to minimize views from existing structures, number one. And number two, that trees with tall canopy heights and other landscaping should have been used. And those, those things weren't done. So that's my point. I didn't say anybody, nobody did anything.
Mayor. Ms. Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I sympathize with Councilmember Tomachoff's neighbors. Nobody wants to see an ugly monopole, 5G monopole, anywhere around them. But I also agree with Councilmember Aldana, Aldama. This would be preferential treatment. We have 14 other 5G monopoles on city property. I believe we were told that. Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, we have 14 others that are either on city property or city right-of-way, yes.
Okay. I believe that this is precedent-setting and may cause other dominoes to fall. Of those 14 properties, how many of them are lease or revenue generating? Some of them, all of them?
Mayor, Councilmember, yes, some of them or all of them. Can't tell you exactly, but we will certainly follow up with that information.
Which, which is another.
My assumption is, based on the industry, it would be typical that they would have some revenue-generating component to them.
Which is another consideration, is that it may, I mean, I, I agree with Councilmember Aldama. If you're going to try to remove this pole because it's aesthetically unpleasing and may or may not be harmful to health, then what about the others? Are we going to remove those as well at the appropriate time? Also, I want you all to think about this. Be careful what you wish for. Say we are successful and don't renew the lease, and this monopole goes away. I guarantee you, this monopole will rise again somewhere in that same vicinity, because they still need the existence of a monopole in that area. And if it's a, if it's on private property, they're generating the revenue, number one, and number two, we don't have anything to say about it, or very little, because we're not allowed to preclude the erection of monopoles or any other kind of wireless equipment in Glendale. So just because it goes away from here, if it goes away from here, I guarantee you, it'll be somewhere in the vicinity of its current location. But what, what concerns me the most is granting special treatment for this one neighborhood if we are not willing to grant the same kind of treatment for other neighborhoods or areas, and in some cases, we cannot, because it's on private property. But I think it sets a bad precedent for everyone all the way around. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor.
Okay, didn't you ask?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. As I read this agenda item for discussion today, the question at hand is, as I read it, was, am I willing to consider, you know, stopping this lease, terminating this agreement? And so for my sake, yes, I am willing to consider doing that. It wasn't presented to me in the material that today was the decision point. It's, yes, I'm willing to consider it. I think other council members have raised some good questions. I do think that our scope is on to, comes down to those poles that are located on city property, where as the property owner, we have some control. I would like to see where they're located so that I could go look at them myself and, or photos of what they look like, and what kind of revenue they generate for us, and what the contract terms are for, for the others. If, you know, all of those variables, I would need to know before I can make a decision, but I am willing to consider. Thank you.
Mr. Milner.
On this particular issue, the one thing that bothers me the most is the topic I brought up when we first discussed it in 2020. And that is the fact that we don't have any regulations anywhere that tell it is safe or it is not safe. And that's very disturbing to me. Why the FCC fails to make a ruling on it, I don't know, other than the fact that I have read a lot of documentation, I've read some very large books about it. I've, I've spoken with the industry. I met with people at the League of Cities that were talking about this and got their input on it. And basically, one side says it's safe and another side says it's not. And we have no regulation, no regulation on safety. And I'm very disturbed that nobody will make a determination. Is it safe or not safe? That's what I'm upset about. So for the safety of firefighters at our stations, I think that we should lean towards the possibility that it's not safe, until we get a ruling that it is safe. We don't know that now. We're assuming it's safe, but nobody has said it's safe. No regulation has come out that said it's safe. There's no studies to say it's safe. That's very disturbing to me. So I would support 100% on this issue for living quarters, that it does not and it should not be around a living quarter. Thank you.
Mr. Aldama.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, I, I, I think my next comments are, I'm going to be chastised a bit, but it is what it is, and I am who I am. So if this was about firefighters, then we should have known this was about firefighters. Nobody ever said that this was about firefighters. I'm learning that maybe someone has gotten ill because of a cell tower in the city? Yeah, hell, we should do something about that yesterday! If that's what this item is, get that damn thing off our property and get it out of here. Hightail it out of here, go somewhere else. Save the life of a firefighter. But god darn it, save the life of a citizen, too. And if you have 14 of these poles in parks and other right-of-ways that belong to us, get them the heck out of here. Do something about it. But I wish I would have known that this was about firefighters. Maybe I'm a self-proclaimed the greatest supporter of, of fire, and I am, and I'll stand by them on this phone. Get that pole out of here! But don't forget the 14 poles in the rest of the city. Let's not forget that. If we have an opportunity to get them out, get them out of here. And if I don't have a 5G phone, who cares? But nobody ever told me, and I didn't forget, that this was about fire. Had I known, I'd have been right there. And I'm looking at you, sir, but it's not you. I'm just upset. So maybe fire should have let me know that. But I'm not happy today. So I can be criticized and chastised.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember.
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, this was just brought to my attention recently, long after this whole thing had been going on. The citizens were concerned about their safety, but I wasn't aware that the International Association of Firefighters had, had taken a position on this. They'd taken a position on this quite some time ago, but it had not been brought to my attention until recently, just literally probably a month or two ago. So I received an email from a citizen, and then I received an email from a firefighter someplace else. And, and then I've talked to a couple of people on the phone. So, I mean, anybody can Google it, you can find, you know, there's a whole big, long report here from the International Association of Firefighters. But what I would say is, since we're not really clear about where we want to go with this, why don't we bring it back to a workshop? Look at where these other poles are, get some more information, possibly from our own firefighters, and see what their opinion is. I'm, I'm not exactly sure, it's my understanding that somehow their original placement of this was, was done with a consensus. I, I'm not exactly sure how it all ended up the way it ended up, because I wasn't part of it. I wasn't, I wasn't even, I was living in Glendale at the time, but I knew nothing about how that big, ugly, white thing ended up out in front of the fire station that they tried to turn into a flagpole. But, you know, I mean, let's bring it back to a workshop. Let's get some more information. Give us a map of the 14 other sites, and we can talk about it. But I don't think, I don't feel like we should let it go just today. So I know I have a conversation with Council, Councilmember, Councilmember Bessler.
Hardly.
Sorry. I have had a conversation with Mr. Bessler about the firefighter thing, but that wasn't the genesis. This has been going on since, since the day that thing went up. This has been on my radar almost every single day, trying to do something about this. So, but, you know, as Councilmember Turner said, we have a process. If there's a consensus to bring this back to a workshop, let's have a hearty discussion about every monopole that's located in the city right-of-way and give our, possibly our own firefighters a chance to weigh in on this with us. That's, that, that discussion has not happened with me. Like I said, it's been from people outside the City of Glendale. Thank you.
All right, my turn. I've got, I guess, a couple differing opinions than, than most. One of them being, we know that our firefighters spend a large amount of their time not in the station, but out answering calls. And so I don't know as though trying to make this into a firefighter safety concern is really where we should be focused, when in fact, the residents that live close by are in their homes a lot more. So I'm, I'm not sure, again, I hope I'm not interrupting over there. I, I would hope that we don't turn this into a firefighter safety issue, when in fact, the firefighters spend less time at the station than the citizens do in the homes nearby. At the same time, we've invested, as near as I can figure, $75,000 this last few months to resolve this issue, that it doesn't sound like we did anything. Neighbors were supposed to put trees up to help hide their concerns of the aesthetics, and I always thought this was all along was about aesthetics, not safety. So again, at what point, at what point is it throwing money at something and then saying, well, now we changed our mind, we're just going to let the money go, and we still want to take them down? So that's another concern. Firefighters, again, you know, I, I don't want this to turn into a firefighter safety issue, because again, most of their time is not in the station. In fact, they're probably driving by a lot more of these poles all over the city that probably could create more harm to them than the time that they actually spend in the station. I know the couple, three or four ride-alongs that I've done, I don't think we were over the station more than 15, 20 minutes. So it seemed like half the time, we were leaving one call and going directly to another one. So at, at any rate, I, I just would like to be focused on what the real issue is and not dilute it so much. It was stated that nobody has made the determination whether they're safe or they're unsafe. That's not true. The determination's been made by the people on each side. People that hate them think they're unsafe, the people that love them think they are safe. So until there's an actual honest-to-God ruling with accurate information, fact is, we don't know who to believe. We just don't know who to believe. Microwaves, I can remember when it came out, we were told microwaves were going to be the worst thing in the world. Every household you go to has a microwave. So is the technology all that much difference? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, not every resident participated in the landscape allowance. The ones that were primarily concerned about the safety of the, of the tower have not participated in the landscape allowance. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
And I wasn't talking about just that allowance, I was talking about the additional monies that were spent to, the city was going to do their portion of it also, plus what your funds did. So with that said, I, I certainly don't have an issue bringing this back to a workshop if that's what the councils would like.
Mayor, could I make one more point? The trees also, as I said in our design guidelines, should have been required to be planted when the pole was put in. So, and they weren't, because it's part of our design guidelines to require trees with tall canopies. So that was a step that was missed when we allowed the pole to be located there. Thank you.
I think it might be easier from now on, we just have all the poles put in horizontally instead of vertically. Might be the simpler solution. So is there a consensus to bring this back with more in-depth at a workshop? Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item five, please.
Thrasherland Annexation Application AN 232 for five acres located north of Glendale Avenue and west of the 115th alignment.
Mayor, members of the council here provide staff report this afternoon is our interim planning manager, Tabitha Perry. planning manager, Tabitha Perry.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. I come before you as a melting popsicle, so thank you for turning up the temperature. The item before you today is in compliance with the annexation policy. So staff is seeking input and direction on the proposal before you this afternoon. Just to give a little bit of context and background information, Thrasherland LLC owns several parcels totaling 40 acres in size along Glendale Avenue. Several of those parcels totaling 35 acres was annexed into the city limits back in August of 2009. So that was prior to council adopting the current annexation policy, which was adopted in 2019. So currently, there is one remaining parcel that the Thrasherland LLC owns that is still located within the county. And that is considered a county allen at this point in time, the way it's located. So the applicant, a property owning owner, is choosing to come to the city to annex and rezon the property to be within the city limits. As council know, because it's not part of what happened back in the annexation policy in 2019, this particular parcel, the five-acre parcel, is not part of any type of established agreements. Okay? And the benefit of doing this annexation from a city's perspective or staff's perspective, as well as the property owner and the applicant, is because it would allow for the total 40-acre parcel to be within the city limits and at a future date, be developed for a overall cohesive development. So once again, the subject site is titled Thrasherland, and it is approximately five acres located at the northwest of Glendale Avenue and the 115th Avenue alignment. The site is currently in the county with a zoning classification of RU 43, which would allow for a single residence. Upon annexation, the city's most compatible zoning would be RR 45, which also would allow for a single residence. The applicant has also submitted a companion rezoning application to rezon the subject site to M2, which is heavy industrial. The subject site is approximately seven miles west of City Hall. Here's the current annexation map, just to give context where the subject property is located in comparison to many other annexation applications that council has approved or in the process to be heard before council. Here's the annexation map, just to provide additional context of the subject's five-acre site and how in comparison, it does surround other properties that are located within the city. It's an area map for additional context for the subject site. This west of the subject site is Gripstick, which is, I guess we identify that as the Glendale Regional Public Safety Training Center, for anyone that may be wondering. Here is an area photograph, just to give additional context to the subject site in comparison of how it looks with the remaining parcels that is already in the city limits. It's worth noting, unlike several other annexation applications, council has heard that in a future date, when this site is developed, they will have to address some issues because the site is within the flood plain or floodway area. But that will be addressed at the point in time when the subject site is developed. Through a third-party Applied Economics provided a fiscal impact analysis for the entire 40 acres, because the five acres would be combined with the other 35 acres for future development. And in their analysis, they determined that the overall project would generate a positive net fiscal for the city. With one-time fees for the combined 40 acres to be estimated at $2.3 million, and then the possible net city benefit of $130,000 per year. Here's a bar chart, just to send it to you from a different perspective. And they're taking the blended average to come up with the revenues being at $210,000 with the expenditures annually to be estimated at $80,000 a year. And then, once again, the overall net benefit to the city annually to be $130,000 per year. If council gives a consensus to proceed forward, the next steps in the process that will come before council would be the blank petition for a public hearing to receive public input, followed by a city council public hearing for the adoption of, in annexation of the five-acre sites, and that date is to be determined. With that, Mayor and council, I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have, but it is staff's recommendation for the council to provide a consensus to proceed forward with the annexation request.
I have a couple of questions. The M2 heavy industrial, when I think of that property out there, I'm thinking of the large pit, because it was a mine site. Is this particular piece of property in the pit or on the same level as the road?
Mayor and council is closer to the pit of the sand and gravel operation.
Okay, so with that, what would prevent them, once they're annexed, of turning this into a landfill and literally competing with the city of Glendale?
Mayor and council, from going through the review process with the applicant, they will use the operation as it's currently being used as of right now, but the ultimate goal is in five years or more, is potentially for the site to be developed for something else. So right now, within the rezoning application that is still under review, it would just go by the M2 zoning district classification within the city's zoning ordinance. And because that's not necessarily the applicant's intent, we could evaluate the possibility of having a stipulation that addresses the land use, but that is something that we need to look into as we review the zoning application.
Okay, so just to be clear, it would continue on as a mining operation, potentially for the next five years or so, until they have gotten all the aggregate that they're looking for?
Mayor, council, the applicant asked me not to hold him to that, but in long term, they're looking at it to be five years or more, that their plan is to potentially have the site developed for a future overall heavy industrial development.
Right, and it's the future that concerns me. That's why I'm trying to dig a little bit. I'm just, I'm not in love with the idea of turning that area into a landfill, just because we lose control. I know the state and the feds don't. County doesn't lose control, but we do on a landfill type of thing. So I'm just, I'm curious. I would like some discussion in the future.
Okay. Mayor and council will work with the applicant and address that to come back before you with more additional information.
All right, any other questions?
Mayor, I share your concern. Is there any possibility of a stipulation indicating that it, the intended future use will not include a landfill?
Mayor and council, there's two steps that staff will need to take. The first one is, we would like to have the opportunity to look upon when the original 35 acres came into the city back in 2009, just to kind of see what was approved with that application as it relates to stipulations. And then just to remind council that we're only talking about five acres. The other 35 acres are already in the city limits with the current M2 zoning. But I do believe there's an opportunity for staff to work with the applicant, to share some of the concerns that council has, and see if they are open to having a stipulation, or we can just present the stipulation before council. But I would like to have the opportunity to, just to go through the rezoning process first.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Perry, I would like to have a better idea of what they, their intended use for the 40 acres is and what the timeframe might be for it. I can, I can gather that, you know, this is just a little tiny bit, this is about the smallest county island I think I've seen. It's only five acres. But, so I can understand for various reasons why it just might be easier for them to continue doing what they're doing on their 40 acres, but if this five acres was, you know, all under the same jurisdiction, rather than having two jurisdictions to deal with, just the simplicity of it might be enough. But then like, but at the same time, they may have other plans for the property, and I'd kind of like to know what that might be. Thank you.
Noted. Thank you.
That's it?
Yes, Mayor, I just need to receive, hopefully, a consensus from the council to proceed with the application.
I think you have that. We would like some more information, so do what you can to find out for us.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right, city manager report.
Mayor, members of the council, we have handed the dais a copy of a new report called the Commercial Vacancy Outreach Program. Just by way of kind of context, a number of months ago, Councilmember Tomlinchov had asked our economic development team, you know, what we're doing to try to help with some of the vacant properties that are not only in her district, but throughout the city. The team came together and through a project that was being headed by Samuel Penna, what we did is came up with this report. And it'll be something that we will update on a regular basis. It, what it does is it shows you by district, each of the elements in terms of how much total commercial space is there, and broken down between office, industrial, and retail. And it shows you kind of what the current vacancy rates. They also are tracking the market to see what the current market is for each of those three areas. And then what they're doing is, we'll be calling on a regular basis on the more significant vacant parcels, talk to the owner and/or representative of that property to see what the city can be doing to assist them in locating tenants and getting that space booked up. So again, I would say just a great job to Sam and to the members of the econ development team, and I hope you will find this, this report, you know, something that you can benefit from. You'll see kind of the range of the challenge of our six districts. We range from a low of about 1.7 million square feet in the Barrell District to over 13.7 million square feet in the Yucca District, although that number's gonna change radically, and that that number will likely go to close to 25 million over the next 12 to 18 months as buildings receive their certificate occupancy. But it kind of just shows you all the different things there, and if you have any suggestions or ideas of additional information you'd like to see in there, please feel free to reach out. With regards to the planning commission meetings, one of the things, if you're aware of, is that we've had to make a number of corrections on information as of late. And certainly not to make excuses, but one of the challenges that staff has is that we, that the council, that the planning commission meets on the Thursday, the first Thursday of the month. Typically, our meeting schedule is the second and fourth Tuesday of the month. And so what's happened is, is that we have, as you know, the planning commission is very busy. We have a number of actions that are almost every month that are coming through that are time-sensitive. Oftentimes, those meetings don't get completed until late in the evening on Thursday evening, which gives us less than 24 hours to provide the city clerk and her team information to make sure it's posted in time. And so it just, it puts everybody under a certain amount of stress, and it has led, unfortunately, to, I think, items not being caught correctly. I reached out to the chair of our planning commission, Mr. Vern Crowe, and asked him if what he thinks the response would be if the members of the planning commission would maybe accept moving to a rotation of the second and fourth Thursdays of the month, which means they would meet two days after a council meeting, but then it would give staff almost 10 days to take their actions and recommendations, get them loaded up, reviewed, making sure all the information is correct. Mr. Crowe did reach out to all the members, and they said, as long as we don't do it in December, but starting in January, that they can all adjust their schedules to do that. I mentioned to the chair of the Government Services Committee two weeks ago, to Councilmember Turner, that I'd be reaching out. So this is a kind of a formal request of the city manager's office to have the Government Services Committee look at that schedule and consider a change, and we would propose that change would take place starting in January of next year. And we think that'll be, that'll put less strain on the staff. More importantly, it'll give us an opportunity to provide information in our presentation that will be more accurate and more thorough for the council. The final thing is, this is Thanksgiving break. As you know, we'll be closed on Thursday, the 25th, and on Friday, the 26th. But I do want to just reach out. We still, doesn't mean that City Hall is shutting down, and the city of Glendale is shutting down. Our firefighters, our police officers, a number of different departments will still be on call during the Thanksgiving holiday, and I just want to personally thank each and every one of those employees who will be giving up time with their families to make sure that our citizens continue to have the kinds of services that they need and are expecting. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey.
Nothing today, thank you.
Council items of special interest. Councilmember has the opportunity to indicate topics that he'd like to have discussed by his council in the future. Councilmember Oldama.
Thank you, Mayor. No council item of interest, but a comment, if I may. Couple of comments. Thank you, City Manager Phelps, for reminding us that it is approaching Thanksgiving. I want to thank all of our staff. Thank you for all you do, and hope you have a great time with your family over the two-day holiday. Again, I want to thank staff for executing the second part of our pivot in Murphy Park. The ceremony went off without a glitch. It was great. I had a really good time. There were a lot of people out there. The council was there, supporting a pivot that they supported last year, and I'm excited that we've executed it. I've gotten a lot of phone calls. Some are a little eerie about it, but on board, and I can't wait to see the results at the end and start our pivot again in December with the concert. So it's great. I think we're gonna have a really good time, and there's tons of families. So, Mr. Phelps, thank you and your staff for executing our second piece of the pivot.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark.
Nothing this time, but I would like to wish every City of Glendale employee a very happy Thanksgiving.
Councilmember Milner.
Nothing today, Mayor.
Councilmember Tomlinchov.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one item. I'd like to do an item of interest for when we rename or make significant changes to festivals, that these, that this council has a seat at the table when these decisions are being made. These events don't really, I mean, I understand the staff position, because they're the ones that have to do the work and put it on, but our community feels like these events belong to them, and these are, these are things that are important. I mean, all the stuff that we do is important, the economic development and the solid waste and all the things that we do, but I hope we don't lose sight of what, the things that are really meaningful to the residents are some of these things that connect them to the community, like Glendale Glitters. Now, whether or not that was the appropriate name, the new name, was the appropriate thing to do, it's out there in the media and other places that city leaders made this change. We didn't, we didn't have a seat at the table to have a discussion about changing this name. Game Night, for example, I have a lot of residents that are not happy about the new game night. Now you have to, instead of getting out in your neighborhood, you have to get in your car and drive out of your neighborhood to participate in game night. So I'd like for the council at least, at least bring it back for a scope of work and have a discussion possibly about us at least having a seat at the table for these decisions. The residents elected us to be their voice, and I believe, it's my belief anyway, that we should have a seat at the table when these decisions are being made. Thank you.
Councilmember Turner.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I have one. A few weeks ago, a resident in my district brought to my attention that the AED, which is the Automatic External Defect
is the Automatic External Defibrillator, the AED at the senior center, the adult center, which is in my district, was no longer there. So, in researching, and I asked some questions about, you know, what happened to it and when might it be back, but it turns out that all of the AEDs in city, as far as I can tell, all of the AEDs in city, in buildings citywide have been removed sometime in the last four or five years. As a financial concern, they were due for replacement, and rather than be replaced, they were removed. So, it totals, I believe, 58 AEDs that aren't out there in our public buildings to be there in case of the need for our employees and our residents. And that concerns me, and I would like to have staff present to us what it's going to take to get those AEDs back in, in, in the facilities where they can be used. Just as a coincidence, only yesterday, our fire department happened to be out presenting three lifesaving awards to employees at Aurora Behavioral Health, which also is in my district, coincidentally, just around the corner from the adult center, for having been able to use a company, their own, Aurora provided AED to revive an employee, a coworker of theirs. So, these things do work. I've asked, I've verified that, yes, they are still desirable to have in our community, and I would like to see primarily, you know, what's it going to take to get these back out there. Thank you.
Page four.
Nothing, Mayor.
Mayor, if I might, I would just like to say that I support Councilmember Tomachov's request for further discussion regarding events, and I do believe that it is important that, that council be informed and be able to weigh in and perhaps solicit community input. But I also, on the other hand, still believe that, that while council thoughts are essential, the bottom line for how these events are presented remains with staff. Thank you.
Okay, my turn. I was also at the event that we spoke about earlier. I thought it was a good event. My, honestly, my biggest concern is that we were gonna have 100,000 people showing up, and there'd be a lot of people thinking it was the old Glendale Glitters that we, as a council, decided that we're trying to sway away from, to have events all the time instead of just sometimes. That wasn't the case. There was far less than normal people, but it was a good crowd. It was a beautiful night, and, and I think it represented Glendale well. And overall, I, you know, obviously, like anything, you can always find issues that could be better, but I think that's what makes our system work, is when we see something that may not be perfect, bring it up and give people a chance to refine it and, and make it better, and that's what I think our city has been exceptional at. With that, I do have one item that I would like staff to look at, and this is something, I don't know why we haven't talked about this, there's probably a good reason, but I can't remember nine years it ever being brought up. Camelback Ranch, we have an opportunity with the city owning that. I don't know why that we can't possibly have an opportunity for a long-term agreement that would result in annual revenue to our city, and when I say that, that's by the naming rights. I don't know why it has to stay Camelback Ranch, why it couldn't be the Coca-Cola field or, you know, I, it just seems like there's a huge opportunity there for us. So, I'd like staff to look at that, find out if there's anything in the contract that prevents it or prohibits it, and, and report back to us if, if there is an opportunity. With that, it's time to go thaw out, I think. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
I still move.
I have a motion. Can I get a second? I have motion second. Any discussion here and on file? All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Does yours have it? Do you have it? The council meeting is recessed for exec.